Good evening. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This is the regular public meeting of the North Brunswick Township Board of Education for Wednesday, August 30th, 2023. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Ali, Mr. Brockman.
Present.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Present.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toad.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29th, 2023 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Lindwood Place, North Brunswick. Mail to the Home News Tribune, the Sentinel, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. We do have one presentation this evening, and we'll turn it over to Mrs. Shiroka. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and we have an exciting presentation this evening by our Director of Assessments. It's not your title anymore. I have to get that one right.
Director of Accountability and Special Programs.
Accountability and Special Programs, Mrs. Mercy Chang. And this is something that is required by the State of New Jersey, that once we get these results, we have to present them to the board within a certain number of days, and we are just making it in under the deadline. So let me know when you want me to switch to the next slide.
I think I'm going to have to hold this. Hi, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for your willingness to listen to my first of the tour of assessment results. Last spring, our 11th grade students, who are now seniors, took the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA. And so today's presentation will be very brief because it only involves one grade level, and I will share with you the results of the assessment, give you a little background of the assessment, also share with you some of our strategies for helping some of our students who didn't pass. You can click, Mrs. Shiroka. Thank you. So some background. This was introduced in 2021. If you were here then, then you might have heard us talking about this assessment. It does replace the old HESPA. Maybe some of you even took that assessment. It is aligned. You don't have to raise your hand. It is aligned to the Grade 10 ELA standards and the Algebra I Geometry and Geometry standards. You know, that could be tricky. I don't want to do too much analysis today, but as you can imagine, if you're an 11th grader, you may have forgotten some of your 10th grade standards. Some of it obviously is recursive, and you hold on to it and you utilize it, but sometimes, you know, we learn what we need to learn, and we move forward with our next courses. So just something to think about. And then last year, the assessment was utilized as a field test. There was a lot of controversy around the assessment. You may have read about it, heard about it, people who really think this assessment is unnecessary, given that our students who are wanting to go to college or other careers do take lots of other assessments. In New Jersey, I believe, if I have this stat right, because you're only one of five states that requires a high school graduation assessment to graduate, because we're special. So last year's cut score was 750. I think they realized that may have been a little high, which is why they utilized the test as a field test, which is why last year our students had no assessment graduation requirements, and they were graduating last year. This year, the cut score is 725, much more reasonable, and I think you'll see from the data that 750 was just not going to work. And that's across the state of New Jersey, not just in North Brunswick. So I'm going to go with the, I cannot believe I forgot my glasses at home, by the way, but I have a copy here, and if anybody can help me if I need it. I'm going to start with ELA, which is honestly some really great results, especially, we like to here talk about growth versus just static results. As compared to last year, we increased our graduation-ready or decreased our not-yet-graduation-ready in ELA by 33%. So that was a huge improvement. Now, I think everybody in New Jersey did better on ELA. So, you know, that's the trend. That's good that we followed the trends. We tested 458 students in language arts. Our average scale score was a 756, but the state's average scale score was a 765. So they kind of beat us by nine points. 110 of our students were not-yet-graduation-ready based on these assessment results, but 348 of them were, which is the majority, 76% of them. And then we do have to report out subgroups to you, any subgroup with more than 10 students in it. So you might not see, like, Native American here, because we might not have 10 of them, but we do have Hispanic. We've tested 173 students, and 65% of them are graduation-ready. Our Asian population performed really well. 90% of those students are graduation-ready based on this one assessment. Our Black and African-American students, 71% of them are graduation-ready.
The total is 73. Yep.
Okay. And our white students, 90%, just like the Asian. Our economically disadvantaged students hung in there at 65% graduation-ready, and special education came in at 41% graduation-ready. We do have 29 grade, now 12 ELL students, English language learners, or the new terminology is multilingual learners. And unfortunately, as you can see, that was our biggest struggle, which is something that we projected. So 10% of them were graduation-ready. That is our data for ELA, and we do have a new supervisor in that role at the high school this year, so I'm sure that she'll be digging into the results and trying to figure out what we can do to help the students who didn't meet their requirements. For math, the results were a little bit different, definitely not as positive as ELA. I can't say to you that I know or understand yet why. Don't forget, this is a two-year-old assessment. We don't have a lot of data back. I can tell you that it's comparable to some of our other colleagues in the area, but of course, we just want to compare ourselves to ourselves, right? We definitely did a little better than last year, but not much. So our average scale score was 726, whereas this state was 734. We tested 459 students in math, one more student. That could mean there was a fourth entry student who didn't have to test, or maybe somebody was absent, but it was one more than ELA. And we have 205 students graduation-ready at 44%, but we do have 56% not graduation-ready based on this particular assessment. Our Hispanic students seem to struggle with this assessment at 29%, and if you remember, 90% of the Asian students were graduation-ready for ELA, and you see a difference here, 79%. So there's definitely something unique, maybe, about the test. I don't, you know, I'm not a test analyzer, or I am, but as you can see, even just by the same subgroups, the changes. The white students was 90% for ELA, and in math here, 60. So definitely a drastic difference, and I'm sure that the state and the assessment writers will take a look at this data and this information and make the changes that they need to make to ensure that the assessment is assessing what we want it to assess and kind of staying sort of the same, right? A student who's probably a really good ELA student at the high school level might generally be an okay math student, you know, at the high school level. And again, our L students, really unfortunately, we have 3% of them graduation-ready. That's one student. So it's definitely, you know, making sure that we stay on top of our bilingual, dual-language program, resources, instructional strategies, courses, you know, is definitely a priority here in North Brunswick, as you know. So that's the math data. I do have a couple of other things I would love to add, though. This slide is showing you other ways students can graduate. So luckily, fortunately, they do give us multiple opportunities. So NJGPA is the assessment students must sit for. That is very important to understand, because if they don't sit for it, or at least attempt it, none of the other pathways are available to them. So we do have to, we do a really good job making sure everybody sits for the assessment, locks in for the assessment, comes to school, because even if they don't pass, we have other options. The other options are assessments that you might be familiar with, like SAT, PSAT, Accuplacer, ACT. And as you're going to see in the next slide or the last few slides, one assessment that used to be available to students was the ASVAB, the Military Assessment, and the NJDOE has removed that from the options. So that did pose a problem for at least 45 of our math students who passed that assessment, who thought it was going to count towards their graduation requirement. Fewer for ELA, but that's a big chunk of kids who thought, you know, I'm set, who then may realize they weren't set. So they didn't really give us an explanation as to why, although they did adjust the cut scores for the other assessments, which did help up some of our students who were initially not passing before May, passing now. But removing that one assessment did affect quite a few of our students. So next steps. I did want to share with you that the NJDOE did remove the ASVAB. I did see that there was some sort of petition, communication about that. We haven't heard back from anyone regarding why, or if they're going to put it back in, or if they're just not budging on that. So we're just going to proceed like they're not budging on that, and we want to make sure our students pass something else. We continue to provide students with multiple alternate opportunities. We do that by offering the PSAT to all of our students for free, which is awesome, because a lot of them wouldn't take it if it weren't for us giving it at school. Obviously, a lot of our students who want to go to college do take the SAT. There was just a test on August 26th. Once we get those results, you might see our numbers, you know, improving even more. We don't care which assessment they pass at this point. We just want to make sure they're ready to graduate. So I don't want to say that the NJGPA is any more important than the PSAT. When I analyze the data, I see students who pass the PSAT and don't pass the NJGPA, and I don't really have an explanation for that, other than as long as they pass one of them. We did offer students an opportunity to retake the NJGPA this summer. Thank you to Mrs. Shiroka and Mrs. Haug for finding the funds for that. And that was awesome, because I just got the results today, and while it's not a huge number, we had eight students additionally from the original number pass that test. So giving them that summer opportunity, we think, was important, and we are glad that we were able to do that. Obviously, as we continue to learn about the content of the NJGPA, we hope that we can help students better understand what to expect without teaching to the test. You know, it's always that balance. And then our NJTSS initiative is on year three. We will continue to meet, develop tier-one intervention plans to support our students. No one that didn't pass will be overlooked. Every student who has yet to pass an assessment will be placed in what we call a lab course for either ELA or math, and in that course, they will do tipics. They will learn strategies for taking one of these assessments. But just in case, they will also be preparing for the portfolio, which is pathway number three. It's the last way that you can graduate if you don't pass any assessment. And we have never not passed a student on the portfolio. So we have lots of faith that if they don't pass one of these standardized assessments, we'll still be able to get them to graduate. I think that was the last slide.
Yes.
Any questions about the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment?
I have a general question. For Algebra I, could that be offered in ninth grade?
Yeah, a lot of students.
Right. So it could be two years removed for some of these students if they're testing that content.
Could be. Three. We have students who take it in eighth grade as well.
Okay.
They also take it in seventh.
Right. Exactly. And I'm not trying to rationalize data. I know that this is a hard conversation to have. There's a lot of nuances that relate to it, but I know that that has been a common comment on the data for math.
Yeah. And obviously, they can't test Grade 11 standards because the years have already. We tested last year, March 17, 18, 19. So, you know, definitely, like you said, very nuanced, lots of particulars, lots of potential reasons, but certainly, we're trying to look at it from all angles.
And are students who have previously taken the PSAT or SAT perhaps, are they aware of what the cutoff score is? Do they maybe know going into this test, that they may already be in a situation where they don't have to put as much effort into it? Could that be part of?
That is definitely part of it, which could skew our numbers.
Yeah.
I also don't know how many of them fully understand right away that, like, I have to pass one of these. You know, they're taking so many. And the cut scores changed, by the way. So these new cut scores I just showed you were from May. They literally released them May 24th, but last year's cut scores were different. So we go into Genesis, and we literally redo the whole system so that when we pull up a student, the graduation tad is accurate. PSAT, ELA passing score used to be a 22, and it's now a 21. We have to redo everything so that we don't miss anybody by mistake. So, you know, I don't know how often we change the cut scores. Mrs. Brockman, Ms. Keita, do you know? Is it very often?
Again, as the former Director of Accountability and Special Programs for the district, since online testing became mandated in the state back in 2014, 15 school year, the same test has never been administered twice, two years in a row. And that is always a factor that we look at when we examine the data. The cut scores continually change. They add in field test questions one year. They take one section away one year. They add time. It really has never been the same test two years in a row. So trying to compare that data is often a challenge, and it has been for, we're looking at now almost 10 years. So.
I don't want to steal Mr. Nellis' time there. He will be sharing with you his school's graduation proficiency rate, and that's his honor to talk about, but it did increase. And so I think as long as we're always moving forward, we're very proud of what he accomplishes there at the high school with a large number of students, very diverse, you know, students and their needs. Do you all have any questions?
I just had, yes, one question for you. So students that say take geometry in the middle school, they have to take the geometry part as an 11th grader?
Yeah. And NJGPA is a general test, and it includes geometry standards and algebra standards. They can't skip it.
Okay. So even though they took it in eighth grade, three years later, they're now being retested. Okay.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. I can be back shortly, like, to share NJSLA, DLM, and Access for L's results, and I look forward to sharing that with you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Keith, would you move on item number six, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes: Regular public meeting, July 26, 2023. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are accepted.
Any communications this evening?
No, Mr. President.
Any old business or new business?
Neither one, but I do have my administrative report.
By all means.
So good evening to all of our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. It is really hard to believe that we are less than a week away from the start of the 23, 24 school year. With each passing year, the summer seems to speed by just a little bit more quickly. Maybe that shows how old I am. I'm not sure. But however, I do hope this letter finds that all of you and your families have truly savored your downtime this summer and enjoying some rest and relaxation. As another school year post-pandemic moves forward, our district remains committed to creating a strong and positive learning environment for all of our students. We will continue to use the WISC model, whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model of health and wellness, with a district-wide focus on reconnecting, as well as reducing chronic absenteeism. The poster in front of me on the dais will be found throughout our district. If you, I think our text, we're going to show that poster down below here, and you'll see it throughout our district, emphasizing our student and parent-facing focus on attendance, the importance of updated immunizations and checkups, maintaining physical and social emotional health, treating one another with respect and kindness, and planning for mindful media use. New certificated staff arrived on Thursday, August 17th, for the start of five days of orientation and professional learning sessions. Dr. Frederick Johnson, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, worked with principals, supervisors, and tech team members to prepare a rich and full agenda for the over 50 new staff who were joining the district. Kudos to Assistant Superintendent Amy Keita and her office staff, the principals, and their teams for a very strong hiring season. Out of 81 certificated openings for the 23, 24 school year, new budgeted, grant expansions, retirements, and resignations, all but nine have been filled, and this is in a tough market for finding teachers, so we're really appreciative. Thank you. Teaching certificated staff returned Tuesday, August 29th, for three full days of professional learning this week, and various orientations have been taking place at all of our schools. We are also proud to announce that North Brunswick Township High School was once again, for the fourth year in a row, honored as one of U.S. News and World Report's best high schools in the country. So we're very proud of them for that honor. Please continue to keep an eye on our website for job openings, teaching positions, lunch aids, and substitute positions. And we do wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. We will see you on Tuesday morning, September 5th, for the first day of the 23, 24 school year, and we are looking forward to making it a great one. That's it for my report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And in lieu of committee reports, maybe some committee updates? We can start with human resources. Mr. Wen?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So the Human Resources and Community Outreach Committee actually met on a Zoom last Wednesday, August 23rd, just to discuss some issues. We discussed some personnel issues, which we cannot, which might be shared at this moment. We also discussed that there is a policy, so based on the recently approved state sick leave legislation that took effect July 3rd, 2023, and the recent Department, New Jersey Department of Education guidance provided to the school district as effective September 1st, 2023. We will utilize the board's right to suspend by law 0131 in order to adopt policy 1642.01, sick leave and new regulation 1642 dot 01, sick leave, with one reading. And that is all.
Thank you. Education Committee, Dr. Patel?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Real quick, while the committee did not meet just a couple of updates, we've had various approvals for workshops and conferences. We have had an approval of the district mentoring plan, the Title I school-wide plans and accompanying statements of assurance. We've also had approvals of all of the PK, pre-K to grade 12 curriculum and textbooks, which is annually approved. And we have also had approvals of student teacher and fieldwork observation placements in the district.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Keith, anything to update on negotiations?
There is nothing at this time on negotiations, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Business Ops, Ms. James?
Sure. And while the Business Operations Committee did not meet, we are resuming our committee meetings next month, but we do have an update for BizOps. Generally, there are some amendments and approvals that are on tonight's agenda. Those are noted on Page 30 and 35 as it relates to transportation, some other change orders that are relevant to HVAC units at North Brunswick, the high school's roof. There are some approvals of various educational site licenses and the acceptance of $50,000 to establish the Doris and Charles Clinton Scholarship Foundation or Fund. Ms. Doris Clinton was a former employee of North Brunswick Township Public Schools and has graciously, in her legacy, decided to leave this amount to North Brunswick for needy students. There's a resolution in our board agenda that I believe will be read by President Legori, and that concludes the updates. Everything else is documented on Pages 30 through 35 for BizOps and transportation.
Thank you very much to everybody. Mr. Brockman, you want to move on item number nine?
Sure. I'd make a motion to approve the administrative, really, it was just administrative, oh, and the committee updates. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the updates and the reports are accepted.
Thank you. At this time, we'll review our agenda for this meeting. Same as in prior months, we've received this electronically. Any updates to that have been bolded at the dais for us this evening, and we'll begin on Page 2, with Page 2 and Page 3. Any questions? Please raise those at this time. Page 4 and Page 5. Page 6 and Page 7. Page 8 and Page 9. Page 10 and Page 11. Page 12 and Page 13. Page 14 and Page 15. Page 16 and Page 17. Page 18 and Page 19. Page 20 and Page 21. Page 22 and Page 23. Page 24 and Page 25. Page 26 and Page 27. Page 28 and Page 29. Page 30 and Page 31. Page 32 and Page 33. Page 34 and Page 35. Page 36 and Page 37. Any remaining questions on agenda will be raised as consent agenda shortly. Seeing none, we'll move to item 11 on our agenda, which is our first public session of the evening. It's on agenda items only. If anyone has any questions for the board on agenda items only, now would be your time, and you have three minutes to address the Seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion of the public meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This portion is closed.
Mr. Carter, would you please move on item 13 for consent agenda?
Sure. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items: Personnel, Curriculum, Miscellaneous, Finance, Items 1 through 3, Policy and Transportation.
Second.
Any further questions on consent agenda? We'll need a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions are accepted and approved.
Thank you. For those following along, we're on Page 37. We're up to the second public session. This is public session on any matter. For those who wish to address the board, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. You'll need to sign in, please, and then just state your name for the record. Thank you.
Charlie Cradaville, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, a community newspaper available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. I did speak at one of your prior meetings, and I want to follow up. I have a question and perhaps some comments to make. The question is, can someone here confirm if Mr. Raymond Trigg is still on the substitute list for the school year?
Mr. Cradaville, if you could just complete your remarks within the time given, and then we'll respond to whatever questions if we're able.
Okay, well, it'd be helpful for me to know if the answer is yes or no.
I get it. It's just that it's public comment, so if you could give your comment, the board will hear. Obviously, I mean, I think you know, I think you know the answer to this question because you've emailed the superintendent a number of times. She's responded to you. And so if you could just finish your remarks, that way we can give you your full, complete time, and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, I am awaiting an answer to a question asked today. That is the question that just sent to Ms. Hock at 11:11 a.m. this morning. So I hope that somebody can get me that yes or no answer before the school year starts because this is a really important issue that I think people are going to want to know before the school year, if this person's still on the substitute list. I copied you all on my email, so I know, Mr. President, you confirmed that you received it. I hope that anybody who didn't receive it reaches out to get a copy. Asking you to take a look at a news article that I wrote and published in June of 2020 without Raymond Trigg, before he became a substitute teacher here in the North Brunswick School District. And I think that the facts in that article can be verified, and they are cause for concern. I think that the public deserves an answer, certainly, to the yes or no question of, is he still going to be on the list this year now that you have this information? I would, you know, like to get that answer and hope that I can get it very soon. And if anybody has questions for me, that you reach out because I'm happy to talk on the record or off the record with anybody in the township. I'm right over in New Brunswick and taking time out of my day because I care. And I did this in accordance with the board to serve the function of protecting the students. And I know you all share that value and that goal. So that's about all I had. I hope I can get the answer before I leave today, if somebody happens to have it since I did ask.
We thank you for your comment. Let the record reflect that he did not consult me on what to wear to the meeting tonight, although we look to him. He's strikingly familiar in our wardrobe this evening.
Can I expect to get an answer from this?
We'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to huddle and consult and let you.
What I was going to say, and Mr. Cradaville, you well know this, that I know you're looking for something very specific. We're busy preparing for the school year. You made a request for information, I guess, for Ms. Hock. Ms. Hock is, you know, you emailed her today. To the extent that what you're looking for exists in a document, we can respond to an OPR request. But we're not going to get involved in a back and forth with respect to personnel here tonight, certainly. And I imagine that the best way to respond to you, if, you know, Ms. Hock is going to decide how she's going to respond, would be to say you can submit an OPR request anytime to this district, as you've done many times in many places that we've worked together in. And we'll get you whatever answers we can. But we're not going to get into a back and forth on personnel. We know what your position is. You've emailed us a number of times as to this individual. But it's personnel. And you well know that we cannot discuss that publicly. We're not going to.
Okay, and just if I could wrap up by saying that, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bush and his expertise. I also, you know, do understand that there are other ways to get information besides the Open Public Records Act and a good government response to fair questions when they're asked, if they can.
Of course, we recognize that. It's just that, you know, yeah, I get it. And we appreciate your zealous advocacy on this particular issue, but we have our own considerations. We have staff that were very sensitive to their personnel privacy rights, and we're just not going to have a discussion with you about this publicly.
Right, and I do respect that. Just what I'm seeking is, what I do think is public information is the yes or no answer.
We're also not going to, we're also not going to get into a back and forth here. So that was the whole idea. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to give your full three minutes, as we do everyone who's afforded the right to speak up here. But we don't want to have a back and forth. This is a, we know what you want. There's an email that's outstanding. You'll get a response. It'll probably be, although it's up to individuals, obviously, along the lines of what I said, and I think we're done.
Yeah, just wrapping up, the thing I wanted is public information. Is it yes or no, is he employed? Which is fair to ask. It's fair for you to confirm one way or the other. So I'm just seeking that, and I asked for that tonight.
Good evening. My name is Speth Passner. I'm the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. I just wanted to welcome everyone back, because we are, you've been here for the last couple of months, everyone. But we are back to a new school year. Our staff has been very, very at work the last two days and for another day tomorrow to prepare for students to come back. We're eagerly awaiting and looking very much forward to a very good school year. So I wanted to wish all of our staff and students and board members, admin, everybody, best of luck in the school year.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public this evening? Seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion of the public meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This portion of the meeting is closed.
Folks, we have no closed session items this evening. So would someone please move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.